Call this meeting to order, I have six oh two P M. Uh, this is a reminder, a non-public session can be called at any time. We want to start public comment, which runs for, is it thirty minutes?
That's correct.
I'm gonna need a lot of help tonight. Um, so at six thirty-two, public comment will close. Um, do we want to jump right to our guests?
They didn't want to stay till eight?
Yeah. Eight, no way.
Jump them up.
Not an hour.
I got a truck, we'll put him in the back.
So.
That'd be great if we could.
Okay. Um. Do it, introduce the grade five and they want to have a class pet discussion. Do you have a PowerPoint prepared that, or something you want to show?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. You guys have the floor, it's all you.
Confident, yes.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah.
Yep.
Is it a pony?
Did you grab?
Hi, we are busy. I then Violet and Max. It all started on the last day of fourth grade when we heard Ms. Curly was going to be our teacher next year for fifth grade. We were all excited and then someone said, wait, will, will we still get Leo? Leo was the original fifth grade teacher's pet turtle over the summer. One of our friends, Parker emailed Ms. Curly and asked for permission to bring her hamster as classroom pet for fifth grade. On the first day of fifth grade, Parker read the letter to the class about offering to bring her hamster. So then it started. On the first day of school, we got some homework that involved choosing pet store like. We had to choose three pets that would be the best choice for our classroom. We grabbed our first choices to, to see what possibility, possibilities, uh, possibility. Possibilities were appropriate for our school.
The top was hamster.
We knew one of the tasks was to make sure the health of the students was not at stake. So Quinn and Maddox went to Ms. Heather to ask about allergies to the animals on our list. Or to the bedding of the animals. We found out that Ms. Heather did not ask students parents about pet allergies, only allergies to medicine. So we did not end up knowing if there were any allergies.
Um, the next thing we did was email you all about the policy and our project.
We had two classmates talk to Ms. Will about having a classroom pet. Ms. Will explained to our class that there was a policy in place, I N G, about animals in school. After reading the policy, we had to eliminate some of our choices.
We had to take off the achlato. That is considered a thought.
The town pol- policy also said we had to make sure that all the town and the state ordinances were followed.
The school policy said that we had to make sure all the state rules were followed. A group of our classmates emailed Mrs. Flinch and, and selectmen. In time to ask if there were any ordinances related, related. Mrs. Flinch kindly wrote back to, to us a few times and we found out. Uh, we found, we found out all pets on our list were okay with the, with the state. There were, there were some things that the health department suggested we would add.
Ms. Flinch shared us, the school health inspector informed, there were two items on the list. Related to the animals on school property. The first was checking to see if the fecal material was clean from the habitat like its cake. The other was to make sure there was a hand washing station with soap and hot water for those taking care and cleaning. It's important that our school passes the health inspection. And we are responsibly following all the rules. We have classmates who are working on creating a care maintenance plan for having a classroom pet.
We took off Jolene because of the male social and needed companion. We are thinking of taking getting pigs off because they also need a companion. We've learned that birds would be a distraction. We love the idea of a rabbit, but learned it requires a lot of cleaning and would not work best in a classroom. There also could be allergies with their bedding. We did a small bit of research and took off, took a lot of animals off our list of pets, so we have narrowed it down.
We were working with our STEM teacher. Miss McCarthy. To learn about food change, food chain and the food web.
We are seeing the science connections this project has, had, has had too.
Ms. Curly led us through an activity that helped us figure out our why. What the top reasons were that we wanted a classroom pet, to make sure they were good ones, not just to have for fun. As a class, we want a pet that helps us teach responsibility. We want it to help provide emotional and social support to us. It would be a great thing because every fifth grader would have a chance to have their own pet.
One step of the process was to have a financial group who looked at things that pets would need and how much it would cost. In total, some of the pets needed a, needed companions, which would double the cost in caring. For a lot of time with research and time we recommended. That the class use the pets in the classroom grant going forward.
This grant would help to pay for the pet. It would give us free habitat like tank, which it also pays for starter costs like food and bedding. It also helps with sustaining, keeping with, with sustaining, keeping a pet by helping. To pay for costs like food over time.
This formulation, formulation. Bring pet. To our station. The house. To bring pets to classrooms. And know how great you will be.
There are many reasons why classroom pets are important. They allow all friendship connections and feel what it's like to have a pet and learn from them. Studies show that animal lessens the tensions and stress in a classroom. Studies show that people with pets have a better immune system. Dr. Harvey Malkovich, pediatrician and editor of the Archives of Diseases in Childhood. Says that they're good for mo- for morale and teaching children about relationships when they need one another or living being. Another living being learns to care for, for a pet helps them learn to care for people. Other doctors, scientists and researchers say that they help build self-esteem, pride and accomplishment.
Heads teach responsibility. Because they have to take care of pets. And feed them.
As of today, with lots of thinking and decisions, we have narrowed it down to.
Fish, leopard gecko, hamster, leaping. We are writing informational pieces on these animals. We will finish this and see which ones best fit our class for educational purposes and responsibility. With one a pet that will, one, teach responsibility, two, support us socially, socially, emotionally and mentally. And three, allow everyone to access it. We will then write persuasive, persuasive pieces and have a vote to see. What the best option might be for our class.
Thank you for your ears tonight.
We appreciate your time. We have been working hard to make sure all policies are followed. What do you think so far? And do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, excellent job. Very thorough, researched and great work. Very impressed.
I'm excited to hear what option is, is picked at the end.
Yeah, when's this vote gonna happen?
We haven't really decided when vote will happen, but it will probably be soon.
Okay.
When you apply for the grant, is there anything else that you're gonna need from either me or the school board when you apply for the grant? Or maybe we haven't figured, we maybe haven't looked at the application yet?
Yeah, we'll probably have to.
Look at that. We know it's out there, we just probably haven't looked at the application yet. So let us know if you need anything when you get to that application piece. I'm very impressed. That's a lot of work for not even three full weeks of school.
Yeah.
And that's on school all day yesterday.
Yeah, and great job presenting too. I mean, I looked at the policy and it sounds like you all took a hard look at the policy too. So there's no questions or anything additional that I can add by way of that.
We went number by number, talked about each one. I think they were a little surprised that the policy was as simple as it is.
Yeah. Yeah. It's great for you to learn. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. Okay. Something flying around my head. Um, do we want to just approve the minutes and then maybe we can jump to the business and financials? Is that something? Okay, okay, thumbs up for Molly. Um, June fourteenth, um, public minutes, any additions, subtractions, changes?
I had one change on page three, under six point one, the staffing projections. Under first grade, maybe two teachers at first grade.
Oh, yeah. All right, back to you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Someone wants to say for this boring part? Anything, any other changes, additions, subtraction?
Nothing.
Okay. Um, make a motion to approve the, getting attacked by some sort of bugs. Um, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, public minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My kids just left with those kids. Um, I guess that's my end. Thank you all.
Yeah. Um, okay, so June fourteenth, the non-public minutes?
Nothing that I missed.
I can make a motion to approve the, uh, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, non-public minutes?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, business and financials?
All right, so there, we don't come typically in the September meeting with a very new financial because here, here's just started.
Yeah.
We're building everything with, uh, the team here. So in front of you, Allison, our manifests, so those are the manifests to date.
Okay.
And everything since the last meeting. So as we close out, class was clear and drinks was clear. I also brought the DOE twenty-five for your sign.
Okay.
So the DOE twenty-five, um, is essentially our year-end financial report. And so if you remember last year, we, we made an effort to spend as much as we could to make room in this year's budget. So we're typically used to seeing something higher than what's on the piece of paper, but we all knew this was coming. So, um, the unassigned town balance at the end of the year is twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. And so that would be going to go and offset the tax rate. This does have two pages. It's the same document, it goes to the Department of Revenue, the Department of Education, but they like two different signature forms.
Okay.
So, uh, the first one is the DOE and Allison, just make sure you sign in the box as a school board chair.
Okay.
The rest of you can sign in the lines. And then the second page behind it, it goes to the D R A. And there is a line for the school board chair and then the rest of you.
Okay.
Um, then also, we wanted to talk about the additional adequacy that is available. So the, the state decided to change the adequacy and it gave districts more money. And they also, with that, give us an opportunity to use the money if we want to.
Okay.
So looking at the spreadsheet that they sent out, there is an additional thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay.
That would be coming to Kensington in the form of adequacy and we can do one of two things. We can either hold a public hearing, which has to be at least seven days, now we have to do the posting in a paper and the online hearing. And then two weeks after that have a time of leave.
Okay.
So it's essentially like a deliberative session, but you actually vote there as well.
Yep.
It's a ballot vote, so it's everybody in the room at that time.
Okay.
And.
And that would be to expend, to spend it on something?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it would be appropriating the money into the current year's budget.
Okay.
If you don't do that, then what happens is it would go to reduce taxes on your tax bills coming out. And so Chris, Chris, Ron, across the S A U, we, we have been recommending to let it go to the tax rate. Because we have not seen any substantial changes in the budget since the bidding process. But here, yes, we did have the change, but we planned for that change by making room in the last year's budget with the rooftop unit.
Right.
Um, and also, we gave back so little in Kensington, this would help off the backup to somewhat of an urban level. I wouldn't say you're still at an urban level even with that, but it would help do that. Um, did I have any questions?
Going back to that twenty, right, with this, the thirty would go onto the twenty?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Yeah, cause.
Well, yeah, it, it adds to the adequacy, so it, it brings down the amount we have to raise in taxation.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's.
So I don't think we need a formal vote unless.
You don't, you don't need a formal vote unless you want to do something with that money. And then again, we have to hold that hearing. You have to post, so that takes about ten days. So you're talking about a month of process. The issue with us getting it so late in August, usually your town likes to set its tax rate by November first, so they usually want all the information by mid-October to the D R A. So you're running up to a time, time on. Not that we can't do it, but it's gonna be really tight and feel rushed. Um, and that would be, that by, that is why we're making the recommendation that, that we would give it back and, and help reduce the tax rate. And that gives you about, you're, be about fifty-five thousand dollars to be looking to reduce the tax rate rather than the twenty-one.
Yep. Right.
And what's the benefit of, of not, of going to that meeting? Does that mean we can basically do something that hasn't already been approved in the budget, so we would have an extra?
So say you knew you wanted to do.
Gym floor or something?
Gym floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just put it off, but it's on your major plan. You can say, oh, it costs thirty-three thousand, it's not gonna be any impact, but you would actually have that thirty-three thousand to spend immediately. But then you'd also have to get that approved by the voters.
Yeah.
Right.
So you've got to have the public hearing to, to give them the justification of why, and then at the deliberative or town meeting, they would all, it would have to have a majority vote to be able to pass that.
Yeah.
So the analogy that the DOE I ended up using last week when discussing it, it's almost like adding a warrant article to the March twenty twenty-three vote that happened last spring. Really late in the game.
Mm-hmm.
In appropriating more funds, but having the inflow of adequacy to offset it. So essentially it would add to this year's budget if you wanted to, or you could appropriate it to a trust fund. But you have to write the warrant article specific to it.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a nice way to kind of beef up that balance that we've depleted and also to offset a little bit of the increase through the budget this year.
Yeah.
Do we need a vote either way?
You don't need a vote if you're not gonna do anything with it.
Okay.
Molly will automatically, after this meeting, go back and then, um, make the recommendation to D R A to add that thirty-three thousand.
Okay. And we, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember any big maintenance project being left out there besides the rooftop unit, which we.
Not from last year.
Yeah, okay.
We did everything on our list this year.
All right. Um, I mean, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Great, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly. Yes, I think you're good.
Cheeseburgers.
Yeah. Thank you. Bye, Molly. Um, okay, committee reports, these probably also will be for the, um, quick, policy committee?
I see is next Thursday, I believe.
Okay.
But yeah, I haven't had anything since last time.
Yeah, I figured, yeah, safety and security, same thing, we haven't met since the last time. Um, superintendent evaluation committee?
That's tomorrow.
Okay. Um, Kensington School Study Update?
That is TBD.
Okay. Um, general correspondence?
So in, um, your packet, I shared with you Governor Sununu's proclamation about September is welcoming schools month. Um, it really, in that proclamation, really talks about the work we're doing with diversity, equity, inclusion and social justice. And it gives us, you know, uh, more of a rationale at the state level to why we're doing this work.
Okay.
Um, to couple that, tomorrow, I'm really excited that, um, we have eight, uh, students from the high school who will be going with, uh, our director of D I J, Andres Mejia. And social studies chair, um, Beth Kaputa. They're gonna, they're gonna actually, uh, provide a testimony, uh, at the New Hampshire State Board of Education meeting. And they're doing that on behalf of the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, and they're going to talk about why this proclamation gives them more meaning than schools. So they're gonna talk about the affinity spaces they've created, about the sense of belonging. And then highlight some of the, the big picture things that they have done as students in high school around D I J. So it kind of goes hand in hand. Um, so I just wanted to make sure you had that, that we recognized it and that we, you know, we thank the governor for the support around, around this work.
That's great.
That's great.
Chris, was there anything in place before this, or is this?
No, so, I mean, actually, a couple of years ago, we had the divisive concept, uh, act that really kind of was counter to this in some ways about what we couldn't do in school. And, and by the governor supporting this and putting this proclamation and said, no, we're, we're not gonna talk about racism, you know, we're not gonna have racist acts in our school. And we're gonna, we're gonna continue to educate and, um, and it really follows line with what we've been doing. So it's a nice supportive measure and really, I think, supports our teachers in our schools to what we're doing.
Yep.
Um, the only other general correspondence that we received was from the town of Kensington, that, about the reassessments of our properties. And so it just had, just letting us know that that was happening and just our currently invaluable building value, that sort of thing.
We all got those too.
Yeah.
We're all like, what?
Y'all probably got that as homework notes as well.
Yeah, that is interesting.
Yeah, building, building number looks a little different on this one.
Yeah. As did all of ours. Um, so the, this. It's like dive bombing my head. Um, the S A U communication, um, and that whole engagement, that piece. Um, I don't think we've heard anything. Okay. So the only update I have from the Budget Advisory Committee is that we are, it is something you will see when we go to review the S A U budget. That there is a line item for, um, for that, for this work to get done. And this is the big, for, it's a, it's the line item for a strategic plan for the next five years. But it has a, we assume that it's gonna have a big piece of this as part of it, um, as communication plan as part of it. So I think that's coming, um, and more information about that is coming, but that is, we haven't forgotten as part of that budget line item.
Yeah, I can add two quick things on that too, one else. And so, uh, Dr. Asbell and I met today with the company that's doing the survey for the co-op.
Okay.
So we went through those survey questions, tightened it up, made sure everything was correct in regards to how we call things here, um, because every school district is different.
Right.
Um, so that, I'm really excited about that data that will go out specifically to the co-op on communications and, um, responsibilities at schools.
Okay.
And then I know that the, the committee is looking to meet, I believe, next week as well. Um, and they're gonna be looking at another survey data that we can use for all of our schools about, um, communication. We did buy a software program, uh, over the summer for all of our schools.
Okay.
That actually does, uh, data analysis. Uh, it's used by higher education, S A T, when you're collecting data and then it analyzes it for you. So those are two, two key components on that communication piece that we've been working on to get the ability to be able to do this at some point.
Okay. Great. Um, and when you say the committee's meeting next week, Chris, is that a committee, the, are the school board, are we supposed to?
That is that communications and, um, the S A U communications, I believe, I can, I can ask.
Okay.
Um, Jennifer Bishop, who's the chair in Newfields, is chairing that.
Okay.
Um, and when I met with her the other day, she had it on the next week, but I'll get you the date, so I'll make sure Stephanie gets that.
Yeah, I don't have that, so that would be good.
Um, and then the community news submission, yes. We need to do that. I'm not good about that. Um, so.
We talked about something for that last time.
Yes, yeah.
Gosh, where is that?
And Stephanie talked about it recently about we completely forgot. I completely forgot.
At the last, um, school study thing and it's right at the end of this school year.
It was, yeah, yeah.
Um, but Jen, Jenny had mentioned that she had a, like a letter that they, you guys had sent last year.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if that's something that we can work off of or if we want to. I don't, I don't really know what, is it, is it to, it's to the community, that's the idea and it's like.
Explains what we do and our roles and, uh, like dates of meetings, it's a real basic, yeah.
So it's, it's not like a, doesn't have to be like a, a rewriting, like we could sort of use like a format.
Somebody had a really good idea though about what we were going to say in that.
Someone did.
Message like last time.
I don't know.
I wanna, like. Was it maybe the, um. It's the work that we did for that, like review packet or the overview?
Oh, the board, yes, the explaining all the, um, the board, like roles and responsibilities, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if that was it, but.
But that, that was before you were.
Okay.
Yeah, we kind of went through and created almost like a online, one page, a one pager about the school board and what their roles and responsibilities were. So, um, kind of similar to what the P T O just put out, which was nice to help understand what the P T O does and did and like their calendar and stuff of meetings. So, um. Is there a community news deadline coming up that we could put that in now that we're back to?
Last deadline was, um, at the beginning of August, so I suspect the next deadline won't be until next month.
That's probably good though, to get the beginning of the school year.
Yeah.
Is it something I could just send now and just say that this is, before it falls off my radar again? Okay.
Just for the next community news.
Okay.
The other thing that maybe might be helpful is for you to get on the email list, cause she sends out a reminder.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
That would be great.
And it goes to like lots of different people in town that have contributed from different organizations. So can we just send that to you? Can I send just forward the, that to Allison and then you'll have?
The timelines.
Um, yeah, she sends out like a week or two before the deadline. She's like, remember deadlines, August fourth.
That's great. Yeah.
I'll keep thinking too, me, like, it might not have been that, but I thought, I remember in the last meeting, like, we had a good idea and then it went away.
My recollection is, because you had just completed that before Jenny left, the board orientation packet is that you were going to say, one of our goals from last year was to complete this, this is what we completed, and why, and then it had all of the information in there.
Okay.
That was what you had talked about for your first submission as kind of like a, um, uh, evaluation of your own goals.
Okay. Okay.
Allison, before you move on, just, um, that superintendent valuation, in your packet, I gave you Esther's goals for the year.
Okay, yes, yeah, yeah.
You just need to review those, it would be good to do it now.
Okay.
So in there, it just, um, I believe for the committee and for Esther, um, if there's anything that you had question about, any, um, things you would like to see changed, you'll be able to give that to, Stephanie, are you on that committee?
Yeah, yeah, we need to.
So Stephanie bring that back to the committee for tomorrow.
Yes, if you guys have any, um, feedback.
Okay, so there's that goal number two, is that?
The community.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, that's already started.
Mm-hmm. Strategic plan, which is that, um, you're going to hear more about that with the budget.
Stephanie, this might be a question for you, it might be a question for Chris, but under goal number two, the first bullet, talks about administrators meeting with each school board member a couple times a year. Is that a, is that a net new add to the, to the goals?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our, our, our thought behind that is to be able to get you know you more than just in this arena.
Yeah.
We have thirty-three board members, and for example, I met with a board member who I've known for six years, and we met for an hour the other day. It's the most we've ever had a chance to communicate, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we do a lot of work together and doing it, you know, on a personal level, getting to know each other, just feel like that would be, you know, building our, our ability to work with one another, so it's a brand new, it's been going well, um, and that's the rationale is to get to know everybody in our office, because you don't get to see everybody, um, but get to know what they do, get to meet them, and same for us.
Okay.
As far as like capabilities go, does everybody have the ability to zoom if needed?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I know that you have someone that's reached out to you, if you can't meet, like, we know everyone's working too, so, um, let them know when you're available, and we'll work around that, that's really our goal, it's just to touch base, and, um, we are asking a couple similar questions, like, how, how are we doing, and what can we keep doing that's going really well, like, we want to know that information.
Yeah.
See where the patterns are of what we can continue to work on as a leadership team, uh, through the SAU.
Okay. And is it, um, just in general, I know we got like that schedule email to us, um, are, are you, like, did someone reach out to you about the upcoming meeting, or is that on us to, or is it?
No, we'll reach out.
Okay.
So each of us a little different, I'll reach out to everyone individually.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Is a little different.
Yeah.
But some people are like, I freed this time up in my calendar, can you meet that time?
Yeah.
If you can't meet, just please be like, hey, I'm working that time, or I am, you know, I've got kid duty that time, you totally understand, and say, can I meet this time? And we'll be flexible, it is, we will make it, uh, work to meet each time.
But otherwise, they're on their schedule, so it's not like you have to confirm it, like, it's, you just go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like I went on Tuesday, I was, um, Esther, no, I just shut up.
Did she, like, send you an email or something beforehand? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would, I would just, you know, put them on your calendar, and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great questions.
So just a little bit more about that strategic plan budget line item as well, it's a, it's a budget item so that we can bring in an outside company to help us as a district do that, um, create that strategic plan.
That's number three.
Yep.
Yeah. I think they're great, goal number four is, is so, that's a lot.
Mm-hmm, it's a lot, yeah, mm-hmm. It's also, you know, it's a huge district, I think you realize that when you start.
I didn't have any additional questions.
Yeah, no, it's good to me, yeah.
There we go.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Steph, let us know if you have, if you need anything from us.
Sure.
Principals report.
Hi. The first thing, um, that I highlighted under our positive community culture was, um, our, um, speaker at convocation, which was our, one of our fifth graders, Carter Dow, um, he was nominated by our staff to represent KES, and so he spoke at this year's opening event in front of all of the SAU sixteen employees, so, um, about eleven hundred adults in the Exeter High School auditorium, and he did a wonderful job, made us all super proud. The theme was trust and inspiration, um, and so he talked a lot about the relationships that he has with his teachers, and how important those relationships have been to him, um, and relationships to, um, his peers, um, and so I think it really just exemplifies some of the things that, um, we hold as a core value here, which is relationships, um, and, and I think Carter spoke to that well at the, um, at the convocation this year, and I did include a link in case you wanted to watch.
I was gonna say, yes.
Watch, yeah, so I did include the link, he comes in about eighteen minutes after it starts, so if you want to just pause that, that's part. So Kensington was well represented, um, the emcee of the morning was also, um, a Kensington, a former Kensington student, she's now a senior at Exeter High School, so she was the emcee, and then Carter was one of the guest speakers, so, um, very proud of our Kensington kids. Um, under meaningful learning, I highlighted, um, some of the, um, opportunities that we've been able to offer students, um, using grant money. So we don't often talk about our grant money in our regular budget process, but I just wanted to highlight some of the grant money that is available, and then, and how that's enhancing the learning. The first thing I highlighted was kindergarten camp, which is something that we started in two thousand eighteen. Um, I think it's been a nice addition to our transition for students, um, coming from preschool into kindergarten, um, allowing them to come those four mornings during the summer and get used to their classroom, and where their cubby is, and how to line up, and all of that kind of stuff. Um, and that is all funded through, uh, the Title IV grant, and it has been each year we've used that grant, um, in order to fund, um, that week for our students, but, um, I think it's been an important addition to our transition process.
Hallie definitely benefited from that, like, that was very helpful for her, and it's nice to see.
And actually, Chris and I were just talking about using the, um, the metrics company that you were talking about, the, of building a, a survey for kindergarten families and just being able to provide some feedback on our trans, kindergarten, preschool to kindergarten transition. Because, you know, we have changed it, and we just want to see is there anything else that we can do differently, and, and get some feedback on things like the camp. The other, um, opportunity that I highlighted was at Orton Gillingham Training, and we used Title II money, and that was some professional development, um, that many of our staff members participated in this summer, it was a pretty intensive five-day training, um, that stu, that teachers, um, did this summer, um, and it is all based, um, you know, to strengthen our literacy instruction, so, um, yeah, it was pretty, probably, you, I know you did it, no, you didn't? Yeah, it was thirty, forty hours.
It was very brutal.
It was intensive. Thank you. We also, using REAP money this year, which is, um, the small school rural education, um, grant money, um, we were again able to offer some summer tutoring for some students who might have received, um, some additional supports during the school year, um, and we were able to offer four weeks of, um, of tutoring for them as well, um, really just kind of trying to prevent that, what, what you call summer slide, so a lot of students lose some of their, their learning over the summer, and so we're trying to just really help maintain some of those skills for students, so we were able to use some, um, grant money to provide that this summer too, so all helping with our learning. Um, and then under health and wellbeing, um, also talking about grant funding, um, we've been really strategic in how we're bringing our fifth graders back together, and I know we had a lot of conversation about staffing last year, and where we landed, we ended up bringing two classes together to make one very large fifth grade class, um, so we've been talking a lot about, um, you know, how we're doing that and thoughtfully doing that, and one of the opportunities that we've provided for them this month is to be able to work with, um, facilitators from the Brown Center, um, doing some low and high ropes elements, and really working on, um, their leadership and problem solving and conflict resolution, and, um, I think I highlighted in here, we always expect our fifth graders to be role models in the building, but I think the experience with the Brown Center facilitators just sort of pushes them a little bit more in their, um, you know, deepening their awareness of that responsibility as, as being the oldest learners in the building, and what that, that really means, um, so they've had one of those days already, and they have a second day with the Brown Center, um, at the end of the month, so, really positive, and again, all grant money, so not part of our regular budget, and it also then was at no cost for families for them to participate, um, either, so.
Yeah.
What is the, the Brown Center, like, what are they specialized in?
So, they're, so they're really known for their ropes course, so, um, but they do a lot of outdoor experian, uh, experiential education, so.
Got it.
A lot of team trust building.
Yep.
Which is both for children and adults.
Okay.
And they'll get a chance to go up on some of the higher elements on their second trips.
Oh, cool, yeah.
Becky, in terms of the grants, who does all that work, the grant writing and researching stuff, do you do all that?
A few, no, I mean, a few years ago, the district, um, or the SAU created a position, a grants writer, um, administrator grants writer, what is?
As a grants writer, you, you get a percentage cost that paid back, and since we had so many grants with ESSER, we were able to use those funds to pay for it.
And it is the best, I don't even know what we pay to, or, or to help us with the grants, but it is a hundred percent worth whatever our contribution is.
No, it's like a part, it's a.
Well, like, it's just in terms of like.
Fifty percent or seventy-five percent, yeah, mm-hmm, and it should be a full-time job, yeah.
So it's in the SAU budget this year, because we don't want to lose it, and as, as our grants have gone away, we still, you have to manage over twenty-six grants in the SAU, it's a lot, so it used to fall on the Associate Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent, Director of Curriculum.
Yeah, and principals.
And principals, and they're just, the time wasn't there, so it's a much cleaner process for our principals to say, here's what we're thinking, here's the rationale, the grant writer writes it, you know, puts all of the, um, the wordsmithing together, and then submits it, so they're, they're not having to do managerial and task-oriented stuff, they can deal with their buildings, but still think about progressing, so I, I agree with Becky, it's, it's a invaluable position.
Because there's so much money available for us to use, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, just having the time to.
I think since two thousand eighteen, we've been really good at spending all of our money every year, before that, we wouldn't, because things wouldn't get passed, and you'd be like, well, I don't have the two hours to go and actually rewrite that.
Totally, yeah. And during the meeting, they actually, like, it's millions of dollars.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the position is in there as a budget item, but it's.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a wash because of the amount of money that's been to the district, yeah.
And it really, it just directly benefits kids and teachers.
Exactly, I mean, it's money we wouldn't have otherwise, so, yeah. It should be a full-time position, yeah.
So I don't know if we want to jump to, like, some of my, the other monthly data and topics, or?
Sure, we can do that, because we already did the class, the class pet discussion, so.
Um, so I think under, you want to do topics or something?
Yeah, so, uh, this should look very similar to last year, Becky and I, um, sat down and looked at last year's schedule and just modified it a little bit, but again, the theory, and this is, you know, part of, uh, Dr. Asbell's goals, is that you're getting monthly meetings on data, and data that is specific to, um, your purview as a board member, and I thought it went really well last year, but it also, you know, broke up the months into specific categories, and that you weren't getting an hour presentation on, on all academics with special ed and facilities and budget that we broke it up, so this would be the schedule we'd like to use, and again, um, we, if we need to, to make a change, we would, we would ask that you give us a little leeway, but looking at where we have the ability to, to share the data with you, this is a, a, a schedule that we'd like to use.
Yeah, so the first thing for September then is, um, looking at our, our s- school testing data from last year, so, um, this will be similar to, um, what we looked at last year, um, I make, the best report that I could, that I think visually shows, so if you, take the first two reports and put them side by side like this. So this, yeah, so this is beginning of year reading, and then end of year reading, so if you look at the top, we should say beginning of year reading, end of year reading, so you can see the growth, um, in our students from beginning to end. Um, we, we took a look at some of this data as a staff at our last staff meeting, just to kind of see the areas, um, you know, where students, where students are growing, and looking at that green growing, and yellow shrinking, and red shrinking through the year, so there was a lot of good information for us, and then, um, as teachers, we can de- dig a little bit deeper, obviously, into each, um, into each grade, to specific students and some categories and that sort of thing, but this is sort of the overall growth that we see in our kids from reading. And then if you take the next two assessments, it's the same, um, growth in math, so math, beginning of the year, and then end of year in math as well. So again, we saw some nice growth in our students, and, and obviously, teachers drill down a little bit deeper into individual, so, but, but, this is our overall.
Like, when, when are we gonna start the process again for this year, or has it already?
Yep, so the beginning, yep, so that's sort of the assessment schedule, that we, we do this assessment three times a year, I did have a middle of the year one, but I figured that was a little hulky, because you need to see the middle of the year one. So students, when the wifi and clever is working, have already started, um, doing the beginning of year assessments, I think that Cam did Miss Poole's class this morning.
There's a lot of nice individualities.
Uh, because that was a, I believe, an, a national issue with clever, so that was not a school-based issue, unfortunately, but, um. So that has already started, so the beginning of the year assessments have started on iReady, and then we've also started all of our beginning of year curriculum-based measures, and so those are more informal, more sort of paper pencil tasks, um, not, not computerized, um, so, yeah, we're collecting all of that beginning of year information for kids right now.
Was it today, like, the first day that it started, or?
In third grade today was the first day we attempted to do it.
Okay, yeah.
We did get it on later in the day, and then we accomplished something.
How, how long does it take to go through the, the exercise?
The iReady testing, um, it, it depends on the child, so it's, it's unlimited, it's not time, they have as much time as they need to finish, so. Some students, after eight minutes, are done, and we like, mm, hang on, um, and then others will, will take days.
Okay.
Karen's like, I had all the time I wanted to, I was like, oh, God, how long were you sitting at it for? We love that, though, it wasn't time.
Well, I mean, the timing piece is something that I think kind of got taken away a while ago, because timed, timed things just add stress to students.
And it's a different, you're measuring something completely different versus, yeah.
So it's, they do know they have as much time as they need, but that does vary from child to child pretty greatly.
Okay, good to know.
So we'll collect, uh, beginning in the me, uh, beginning of the year, mid-year data usually happens in January, um, and then end of the year data usually in the May-ish timeframe, which, some of the testing still gets pushed into June, I'll try as much as we can to get, to finish up in May, but.
And that's what families get home in the mail.
Yes, yeah, so you, families get their individual child's growth report.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's under personnel.
Uh, yeah, you can do it under personnel.
Uh, do you want to, do you want to jump, or do you want to stay with new business?
We could do your board goals.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have one thing under personnel that Becky will.
Okay, so let's do, um, board goals for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Do we, yeah.
So that's looking at these three and seeing if we want to change them. So that's looking at these three and seeing if we want to change them for next year. Is that the idea?
Uh, yes, right, or make new ones?
Yeah, I think it's right at the very, very top page one. Oh, yeah, a little further up, all the way. So data discussion, reports, educational program.
That's that first one. I think that's great. It's been great. I think it keeps us informed of what's actually happening at a building level. And what's going on for students and staff. So I think, I, I mean, I don't know if I would change that one. I think it's a good process that we have.
I agree. I like it too.
Number two is comple- completed question mark? I mean, I think we did that, right? So I guess we probably should not have that on there again.
Yeah, that one's definitely gotta come out. So then the last one, board and community, like, real shit, like, community stakeholders and schools.
And we can continue to have that. So we have two. Chris, is it generally recommended that we have three goals?
Uh, I mean, it's what you can handle. Some boards have six. That's the most in the district. Most have about three. So I would just refer you to your annual goals. So that's policy BA. You know, most of the goals can be written about your board meetings, policy development, fiscal management, your role in educational program development. Member orientation, which you just completed, which was a great goal. Board member development was there. Officer performance, relationship, board staff relationship, community relationship, legislation and governmental relationship and risk management. So I don't know if any of those, pick your fancies. The other thing you can do is that we know that you want to take out number two, which would be appropriate. If you want to keep one and three, which would be now one and two, and then each, every, all of you come with a thought of of your new policy BA. And saying, is there something there that we feel from last meetings or this year, you think we could, and then have a have a discussion about that?
Fiscal, I'm just thinking, the two that jumped out to me just really quickly, fiscal responsibility. I mean, I, I, I think we've done a really good job. And we still ended up with like a massive budget increase. I don't know if there's anything, any, if it's even worth creating a goal there or looking at that. So I, I mean, I'll just even throw that out there as like food for thought. And then staff board relationships. I don't know if you've seen things create under that, Chris, but.
That's the one that we try to kind of, that's the one that can get murky.
Yeah, I don't know if we, like, my thought was coming in and just observing a, like, just coming, doing a tour of the building. Okay, I can, we can bake cakes or cookies.
You'll definitely have to visit fifth grade once they've determined their.
Yeah, that's true.
That could be a goal that each of you, you know, have a day or or time spent in the classrooms here.
Yeah, that's, that's what came to mind. It's just to get that kind of, again, on the ground feeling for what it's like to be in the building.
I I have seen that written as goals before. Have an orientation in the school, a tour, a day.
Yeah, I mean, I would love the kids to do it even.
So I've seen that written in in those three different ways.
Okay, so maybe something along those lines. But, I mean, I think taking it, some time to step away and think about it would be.
So I'll put it on the agenda that will, everyone will come with something and we'll really finalize those at the next.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. And cookies can be number four. I'm fine with that. Any old, there's nothing listed under old business. Okay, people related matters?
Nothing for that.
Okay, so personnel?
Um, just a couple of things to update. It was a very busy summer. No, we're fortunate, we hired our first grade teacher, we hired our new art teacher, we hired a new special education case manager, we hired our music teacher. So I was pleased that we started the year with all of our professional positions intact.
You should get a huge round of applause for that, cause that is not easy in this current environment, yeah.
Right by the hair of our chiny chin. Processed through HR. We unfortunately did have a resignation of one of our paraprofessionals over the summer. And that's something we can talk a little bit more to when we get to budget development. Again, the reason was because we don't offer health benefits here. And so she accepted a position at another school in SAU sixteen because they do offer health benefits. So that is something we've talked at the board before about trying to offer some health benefits to our pairs. And we also received another resignation of a paraprofessional when school started. So we've hired some, we've lost some. So we're still, we still have a couple of open paraprofessional positions that we're still hiring for. What I'd like to talk to you a little bit about is a proposal to increase occupational therapy time at Kensington Elementary School because of our increased numbers. So I'm actually kind of gonna start in the middle of the page where you see the bolded numbers. Our special education numbers last year, fifteen point two percent of our students were identified as having a special education disability. To start the year, we're already at nineteen point five percent of our student population identified. And we have already our four students in the referral process. So we've had a pretty significant increase since we did our budget a year ago. So one of the areas that that we're looking at is our occupational therapist, who is not currently full time right now. Increasing her time to full time to be able to to service the requirements of the students' IEPs. And we're also looking at some additional responsibilities for her within the school. We don't have a school psychologist on our staff this year. And so we're looking at our occupational therapist to be able to help with some of the things that that person had done in the past, such as behavior plans, regulation plans for students, that sort of thing. I'm also looking to have the person in this position assume responsibility for preschool coordination because we're no longer sharing the cost of the pre-K program with Brentwood. So that was a shift, again, that we hadn't anticipated when we did the budget last October. That was a shift that was made this past year. So there's some additional responsibilities that have, that are sitting on our plate here at school and we're needing someone to do that. My proposal down at the very bottom, the cost to increase the OT to full time is twenty-six thousand nine hundred fifty-five and twenty-three cents. That includes a salary FICET and retirement. And I'm proposing that the additional cost be covered entirely by our IDEA federal grant, so it won't impact our KES regular operating budget.
How does it fit into that grant, Becky? Like, what is that?
So that's a special education grant. You can only use that money for special education purposes. And unlike some of the other title two and title four grants and REIT money that we talked about earlier, the IDEA grant can only be used for special education purposes. So each school is allotted X number of dollars for unanticipated, unbudgeted kinds of things. And so I'm proposing that we use that money. I don't necess, we don't necessarily need your approval. This is more for your information so that you're well aware of this pretty significant increase in need. And a shift in her responsibilities, just because of some staffing changes in the building. So you can see that our, just comparatively, I just gave you some national numbers, SAU averages, New Hampshire averages. Because I think probably a full time OT at a building this size might seem that that's unusual. But we also have higher percentages. We have higher than average percentages of our special education population as well, both higher than the SAU average and higher than New Hampshire averages and higher than national averages as well, so.
What percentage of that nineteen percent receives OT services specifically?
That's a great question. I can do that math in my head. So I'm not sure I can answer that as a percentage. What I, when I looked at her direct direct service time versus what's available in an eighty percent time, keeping in mind that students aren't available for direct services six and a half hours a day, cause they have things like special and lunch and recess and that sort of thing. Currently, there's two and a half hours each week that she has in IEPs that she's unable to cover in an eighty percent time. So there's two and a half hours of direct of direct service that she doesn't have in her four days a week.
If we didn't use this money, this grant money for her, what are some of the? I think my, my hesitation is we've had a couple of really special, special education heavy need students come into the district unexpectedly. And so if something like that, we are, I'm assuming tapping this grant completely, like, upping her to full time? Or is there still money left?
There's still other money. And this does not touch our reserve fund.
Right, but I don't want to touch that either. So this, that's the only, so that, and this is for a single year. And then after this year, is the expectation that this would go into a a budget or that she would drop back down to eighty percent?
It all depends on student need. So for example, there's some years where, as if you remember a few years, we had very high preschool numbers and we had I think seven or eight identified preschoolers, which was an unusually high number for us. Some years we have two preschoolers. So it really depends on our students and their, and their needs.
So I think paying for it with grant money is one thing. I think asking for a full time OT for a school of this size in a, in a budget that already struggles to get under ten percent is gonna be a struggle. So my concern is I, I mean, I guess it is what it is. Like, it would just be concerning that we wouldn't be able to sustain this.
And are we sitting here, if we're talking about point eight to one, like, what, what's the timing workout for that? Are we talking like four to five days a week to five days a week?
Four to six, right, so four days a week to five days a week. And understanding that some of that responsibility is our other things, such as the preschool coordination. Assuming some other responsibilities that our school psychologist would have done in previous, just cause right now we are just contracting for evaluation. So in the years past, we've had a school psychologist here a day and a half a week and we don't have that this year. So there are some additional responsibilities that I've asked to shift to her in lieu of not having other staff.
So is that happening or will that be happening now? Like, is?
So my intention is with with shifting her to full time, I, those additional responsibilities could be assumed. She could not assume any of those things at eighty percent. Which then means we have unmet responsibilities in the building.
How many students is this? I guess I should break, I'll do the math in my head. Like twenty percent of like one twenty-five, it's like twenty, twenty-five-ish students with IEPs. I guess I'm really struggling to see how that doesn't fit into a four day work week. If not all of them are even receiving OT.
So it is, um, we, we did anticipate with the referrals, it would be over thirty students. Some students receive occupational supports once a week, some receive it twice a week. It's individual, I'm their IEPs. And I, and I think too, when you think of direct service, that it's not just the time with the student, but then there's consult to the teacher, there's the IEP development, there's the evaluation. There's so a student on the caseload is just not two thirty minute blocks a week. There's more to supporting the student than just the direct service.
And every student is, that's receiving services is one on one or are there?
Some of them are groups. Some are one on one, some are groups.
And so this is essentially just a notification of, hey, here's, here's what we're doing, here's what we're thinking, here's how it won't impact the budget, but it impacts a grant.
Yeah, so with the grant, we would need board approval to to use that money, cause it's being allocated correctly. I asked Becky to bring it to you so we can be transparent about the needs and how OT would be covering some services outside of typically OT. Because of the needs of the building. And how do we, you know, to Allison's point, you, you, there was a significant, you know, increase last year. And again, some of it was predicated on on student need. But over and over again, how do we not get to a budget, you know, increase? Because I'm not sure what's the capacity that this town can can take with continued budget increases. So that's the the cautious part that we're looking at. In in this model, using IDA funds for a year, I I could support that because it's gonna meet needs for kids. I think we need to reevaluate. Because you either need to say, and the board's gonna be behind, does this become a full time position? Like, but a school the size typically does not have a five day a week OT. It's it's very atypical. So how do we, how do we become more efficient with different things? Or do kids uh, test out and go to the middle school? So it it might shift caseloads, it might shift numbers. So that, I think, needs to be processed through Becky and Dr. Bennett. When we look at special ed and auditing, when we're budgeting, we're really truly giving you the full picture of it. So again, it was really to for you to understand it, to hear it, ask questions, see if you need more data, cause you're obviously on the, on the block when it goes for the budget. It becomes your budget. It's our proposal to you of what we need and then you have to answer to the, to the townspeople. So that is why we wanted to have that discussion with you.
So this idea of federal grant, is it just a one year?
We get it every year, but it is dependent. So some years it goes down significantly. So next year, there's no guarantee that we're gonna have the same thing.
We'll be able to use.
And unfortunately, special ed, year after year, takes significant cuts. And again, two years ago, we were able to combine our SAU money. So it was on a needs basis. Now it's probably a student basis. So no longer, like when Kensington had some significant move-ins and maybe Newfields had none, we could shift money in our SAU, but the federal government no longer allows us to do that. So these, this is how we're all of our districts in the SAU are playing catch up because of that law change.
I also don't like to see a position paid for year after year with grant money. It should be in your budget. Yeah, at that point, it's no longer, you know, a grant funded thing. It's a, this should be a staffing.
So if we did this, the
line item that should be.
The conversation we'd have with the employees that this would be for this year and it would be investigated. Because again, if we can't in good faith put it into a budget because of other needs, we would do that unless we had. But Allison is right, you typically don't want to, you don't you can't keep a position year after year, cause then you're surplanting your budget and supplementing it. This is what the ID, IDA money is about.
And I think that's part of what happened the last few years. Our PT and OT and had all been paid for through grant money. And then when we shifted them back into our regular budget, we saw that big bump up because they had previously been, been grant funded.
Is, was losing the school psychologist piece, was that like a staffing thing or was that an intentional, like a budget?
That was an unanticipated staffing change. So when we built the budget last year, we had anticipated still having that position a day and a half. But with this change in staffing this spring, it's now become a contracted service for many of the schools in the, in the SAU. For, for just evaluation purposes, not for the other. Not for the other services that school psychs provide, but just for evaluations.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, the risk would be that we lose a little bit of money out of the IDEA federal grant that might be available for something else that's TBD at this point. Otherwise, this happens now, but we need to make sure that we consider it for budgeting purposes when the time comes.
And I think when we look at the, our themes, I think special education is actually our theme to look at for next year and our data or next month. Which I think is good timing because it's right before. Which I think is good timing because it's right before we head into that budget. Cycle development and, um, you know, we need to just take a look at what's happened with special education at Kensington over the last few years. Because it's been a pretty significant change, um, to our population and the demands of our team. Over the last few years.
I think in preparation for that meet for next month, is that when it is, this next month? I think we're gonna need some really good numbers about numbers of kids, hours, needs. I think I probably have a bit of a better understanding, but I think for all of us to understand what that looks like. As far as what case managers are, how many kids on the caseload, what does it mean to be a k- special case manager, who's doing all that work, you know, so I think.
Yeah, and I, I, I have most of that actually, I just didn't bring it for this meeting. And just kind of, um, look at not only, um, direct service consultation, um, for, um, identified students. But many of our special ed team are also, um, uh, service providers. And, and do consultation for students on five oh four plans as well. We also have an increased number of students on five oh four plans over the last few years. And then we're always looking at what we're calling response to intervention, not just for academics, but for, um, social emotional things as well. And most, most of that falls on our guidance counselor's shoulders. But there is certainly support from our special ed team, um, in supporting students who aren't identified as well. But yeah, I'm, I can definitely bring, um, caseloads and numbers, direct service hours, consult hours. Um, all of that kinda stuff for next, for the next meeting.
I think that's it for.
Thank you for those questions and that conversation, that's just helpful, I think, for everyone to know why. Appreciate it.
Okay, I make a motion for, to adjourn at seven fif- there's no non-public.
No, no, nope.
Uh, make a motion to adjourn at seven fifteen PM?
One second.